Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting of Monday, October the 13th, 2025 to order. Mr. Borders, have you seen Mr. Clark? While he's looking to see if Mr. Clark's outside, I would ask that you keep the family of Coach Jim Taylor. Yeah, he was probably a legend. Well, he is a legend in his county, probably one of the greatest football coaches to ever coach high school football. He passed away, I believe, two days ago. If you also, if you would, keep the principal of Burns High School, Jennifer Aberley. Her mother passed away late last night. So, Mr. Borders, could you come and give us an invocation, please?
Let us pray. Oh gracious, kind God, we thank you for another opportunity to come together, Lord, and we pray right now that you just be in the midst of this meeting to celebrate our young people and our staff and everyone that's involved. And, Lord, we just pray for this board, Lord, that you just keep them covered. We thank you and we ask all these things in your Son Jesus' name. Let everyone say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Borders. At this time, we have Serenity Jenkins... Oh, yeah, well, that's where I'm getting ready. At this time, we have Serenity Jenkins Brown from Elizabeth Elementary School. If she would come forward and lead us in our pledge. I appreciate it. If everyone would stand, please. All right, just one quick announcement I'd like to make before we get into our recognition. As Chairman of the Board of Education, I want to express our full support for National Bully Prevention Month and the importance of creating a safe and respectful environment for every student in our district. Bullying has no place in our schools or in our community. We are committed to policies, programs, and partnership that empower students, support educators, and foster a culture of kindness, courage, and respect. I encourage all staff, students, families, and community members to wear orange on October the 22nd, a national day to stand together against bullying and to promote kindness and respect for all. Again, October the 22nd. Together, let's promote attitudes of kindness and respect and reaffirm our commitment to making our schools safe and welcoming for all. With that, Dr. Fisher, if you would come forward, I think you have some presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have lots of recognition tonight, and it's just a great opportunity to recognize both some schools tonight. We've got some really special students that we want to recognize. And then after I do that, Daniel Howell's going to be here to recognize some really special staff members. So, but to get us started, I'd like for the team from North Shelby School that's here tonight, if you'll come join me up front. As the team from North Shelby is coming, it is very appropriate that tonight, we recognize North Shelby School for being a 2025 state and national school of character. North Shelby School has undergone a rigorous process to establish themselves as a school of character. They received state designation last year and have continued to push that into national recognition. Had visited by DPI and folks from the character organization there and just a tremendous amount of outpouring of support for both the students and staff at North Shelby and the things that are going on at that school. Let me read just a little bit about this. Your commitment to excellence in character education is evident by the high praise you receive by the North Carolina Schools of Character Selection Committee and Character.org. Thank you for serving as a beacon of light in our state by developing a climate and culture in your school that shows character really doesn't matter. Really does matter, excuse me, the character really doesn't matter. In a time where, in a time where our world needs more kindness, needs high character, those traits are evident every day at North Shelby School. I can tell you that if you think you're having a bad day, if you think things are, life is tough, you go spend a day at North Shelby School. And you see the work that this staff does every day to meet the needs of our students. I would encourage you to go sometime during lunch. What a heartwarming experience, understanding what these people do and the commitment they have in serving our students. And so, thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for demonstrating that. And thank you for setting a challenge that we all not only ought to live our lives with character, but we ought to be a school and a community full of character. And it's appropriate that here in Anti-Bullying Awareness Month, when we're focusing on kindness and we're focused on those attributes, that North Shelby is a lighthouse, is a beacon of the work that we're doing for high character. In December, North Shelby School, the representatives, maybe not all of these representatives, but a group of folks from North Shelby School will be at the State Board meeting, making Cleveland County schools proud and presenting their information to State Board and some State Board recognition. So, that's great. So, join me tonight in recognizing North Shelby School and their great accomplishments. We'll get an opportunity for you guys to get your picture made and just extremely proud of the work that you're doing at North Shelby School. So, as Officer, as Chairman Shores mentioned, this is National Bully Awareness Month. As we recognize the month of October as National Bully Awareness Month, we're reminded of our shared responsibility to foster learning environments where all students feel safe, supported, and respected. This month serves as a critical opportunity to acknowledge the harmful impacts of bullying, both seen and unseen, and to renew our commitment to prevention and positive culture building. While bullying remains a serious issue in schools across the nation, affecting students' academic performance, emotional well-being, and long-term development, whether this bullying takes the form of physical intimidation, verbal harassment, social exclusion, or cyberbullying, the consequences are deeply felt by those who experience it. As many of you know, and Chairman Shores just mentioned, October is Bully Awareness Month, a time dedicated to shining a light on the impact of bullying and the steps we, as a community, can take to prevent it. It's an important opportunity to reflect on the kind of environment we want to create for every student who walks through the doors of our schools. Bullying, in all its forms, whether physical, verbal, social, or online, can have lasting and painful effects. It can make students feel isolated, unsafe, and invisible. While awareness of bullying is a critical first step, it must be paired with intentional action. This is where the value of kindness plays a vital role. Promoting kindness in our schools is not merely about encouraging polite behavior. It's about cultivating a culture grounded in empathy, respect, and inclusion for all. When kindness becomes the standard, students are empowered to stand up for one another, to celebrate differences, and to contribute to a stronger school community. That is why kindness matters so much, not just this month, but every single day. Kindness is more than just being nice. It's about showing respect and practicing empathy. When we lead with kindness, we create classrooms where students feel seen, feel heard, and feel valued. During Bully Awareness Months, let's recommit to promoting conversations that empower students to stand up, speak out, support one another, and be kind. Let's make it clear that bullying has no place in our schools and that kindness is just not encouraged, it's our expectation. As a part of this effort, Cleveland County Schools has embraced a Stand Up For Kindness campaign that originated through the leadership of our Board Chair, Joel Shores. Mr. Shores has set a challenge for our students and schools to accelerate kindness through our Stand Up For Kindness campaign. So, tonight, we're going to recognize our school-level Stand Up For Kindness campaign winners for the first nine weeks. So, students, when I call your name, please come up. You'll receive a certificate from Dr. Hahnle. Once all students have come up and received their certificates, we will circle around and take a big picture. Board members, we're just excited that as we push this Stand Up For Kindness campaign, we have a lot of people doing the right thing in our schools. If you read the news, if you watch the news, if you're involved with that, there's so many things that can deter that and can distract us from a lot of young people doing the right things. It's so, it's great to see an auditorium full tonight with students, parents, school personnel, school administrators, recognizing young people for standing up for kindness, for doing the right thing, that something is, we think is just as simple as being kind, yet it's not just that simple. It's really showcasing the words kindness into our actions and the things we do every day. So, students, when I call your name, come up and be greeted by Dr. Hahnle with a certificate. First, from Bethware Elementary, Liam Jones. From Boiling Springs Elementary, Emma Owens. From Burns High School, Conrad Cosney. From Burns Middle School, Juan Uribe. From Caesar Elementary, River Simpson. From Cleveland Early College High School, Landon Alstead Smith. From Crest High School, Michaela Neelms. From Crest Middle School, Gina Thies. From East Elementary School, Nala Floyd. Dr. Hahnle, pay attention. From Elizabeth Elementary School, Serenity Brown. Serenity, you did a great job of the pledge of allegiance. From Grover Elementary School, Talaya Jackson. From James Love Elementary School, Miracle Ramsour. From Fallston Elementary, Aiden Smith. From Jefferson Elementary, Molly Hayes. From Kings Mountain High School, Elizabeth Bolt. From Kings Mountain Intermediate School, Bennett Burgess. From Kings Mountain Middle School, Emmeline Johnson. From North Elementary School, Serenity Jergen. From North Shelby School, Alexa Ruiz. From Shelby High School, Liliana Scott. From Shelby Middle School, Elise Strong, Andrea Husky, and Leah Anderson. From Springmore Elementary School, Nick Haley. Excited to get up here, Dr. Hahnle. From Township 3 Elementary, Evan Vincent. From Union Elementary, Kennedy Elliott. From Washington Elementary, Addison Pike. And from West Elementary, Lily Falls. Members of the board, these are your first nine weeks Stand Up For Kindness winners. And these young people have demonstrated what we want to see in our schools. Students, we will have winners for the second nine weeks, the third nine weeks, and then at the end of the year, we'll have a grand prize winner for some cash. So, I know everybody's excited about that. So, if everybody, if you guys will come on around. And for anybody that needs photo arranging, Dr. Hahnle is available after the program. Thank you, guys. Thank you for being kind. Appreciate what you do every day. Thank you for your leadership in your schools. It is appreciated and obviously, it is noticed. Make sure before you leave tonight, or as you leave, make sure you tell your parents, your grandparents, or whoever brought you tonight, thank you for bringing you out and thank you for what they do as well. Obviously, their kindness has rubbed off on you and you do a great job of exhibiting kindness in our schools.
I would like to make one announcement before all of you get out. We've had several other people that have contributed to the educational foundation for this cause. If anyone watching tonight, or anyone in the audience, would like to contribute financially to this cause, just contact Dr. Fisher or the President of Cleveland County Educational Foundation, Jamie Davis, which greatly appreciated. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the...
Yeah, just one second.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here this evening to recognize and commend several outstanding individuals whose quick actions and professionalism recently saved the lives of students within Cleveland County schools. At this time, I'd like to call up Deputy Greg Johnson with the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, Bethware Elementary School staff members Allison Benfield, Cameron Clark, Michelle Franklin, and Nicole Fonse. While they're coming up, on September the 11th, 2025, at Crest Middle School, School Resource Officer Deputy Greg Johnson of the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office responded immediately when a student began choking during the school day. Deputy Johnson performed abdominal thrust maneuver, formerly known as the Heimlich maneuver, successfully clearing the student's airway and preventing a potential tragedy. His decisive response and commitment to the student's safety exemplified the highest standards of service. Likewise, on October the 2nd, 2025, at Bethware Elementary School, staff members Allison Benfield, Cameron Clark, Michelle Franklin, and Nicole Fonse demonstrated exceptional care and presence of mind when a student experienced a similar emergency. Working together, they also performed the abdominal thrust maneuver, effectively dislodging the obstruction and saving the student's life. The quick thinking, training, and teamwork displayed by Deputy Johnson and the Bethware Elementary School staff reflect extraordinary dedication to the safety and well-being of our students. Their actions are example of the compassion and professionalism that define our school community. On behalf of the students, staff, and families of Cleveland County schools, we want to express our deepest appreciation to those individuals for their heroic efforts. Their courage and readiness to act in moments of crisis bring great pride and credit to our schools and our entire school district. So, at this time, they're standing in front of you. I can't think of a better time that I could stand up and recognize individuals who did the right thing at the right time, and we have two students in our county that are still here because of their actions.
Good job. Great job. Good job. Yeah, just stand up. That's, that's exceptional right there. All right, we'll give them just a minute. Ginger. I need ginger. It done went anywhere. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a comment to make about the agenda first. I've got about two and I have three pages of questions to ask on the personnel policy and personnel files. I move that this be...
Sorry about that. I move that this be tabled until, these two policies, until next time unless you want me to go through all my questions tonight. Not on personnel issues in open meeting.
Can you, just one, can you clarify which policy you're referring to?
The personnel policy and then the one on personnel files. Oh, you're talking about the policies for adoption. I misunderstood. Yes. It's a... Yeah, we can, we can deal with those when we get there. All right. All right, I heard Mr. Bridges, Mr. Grigg, first and second. And we will, you can have your questions when we get to there, okay? All right, all those in favor? All right, that passes nine to zero. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to, for the approval of the minutes from September 8th, 2025, closed session, October 7th, 2025. Mr. Bridges made a motion. Mr. Humphrey's made a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's nine to zero. All right, finance and personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The October 1st Finance and Personnel Committee meeting was called to order by Committee Chair Aaron Bridges. Rod McDaniel shared that there have been no changes in the state budget. No budget has been approved. We do not anticipate any additional mini-bills at this time, so we are opening on the current information we have at this time. Mr. McDaniel shared that the December pay date for employees will be December 31st, 2025. This will be a change for employees as they typically have been paid on the last teacher work day. This change complies with the state law regarding pay for teachers. This has been communicated to employees. Mr. McDaniel shared that the 2025-2026 proposed beginning budget resolution highlighting how the budget is set up in sections by purpose and funding source. Each section was discussed by the committee. The budget resolution was unanimously supported and recommended approval by the full board in their October meeting. Eric Lamanna shared a state health plan update. Open enrollment is in October 2025. Communications has been set out to employees and will continue to be set out this month. Mr. Lamanna, excuse me, shared that the Human Resources Department is working on various mandatory reports for NCDPI relating to staffing. Dr. Fisher shared that the, shared the draft 2026-2030 Strategic Plan was some tweaks to the education and policy goals. This will be put on the board agenda in October as an information item and in November as an action item. Dr. Fisher and Dr. Wampler shared three options for the 2026-2027 school calendar along with feedback from teachers and the community. The committee discussed the option selection of the 2026-2027 calendar will come to the board for approval at their October meeting. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Finance and Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 29th, 2025, at 11:45 a.m.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Coming from committee is a proposed beginning budget resolution. It does come from committee. Any questions on that?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
I, I made a phone call to question why we're having to go to the 30th, and I never got no statement back that we have written document that we cannot pay on the last school day instead of going to the 30th like we've always done, because they use that money for Christmas. And also, on our unclassified staff, like substitutes, TAs, bus drivers, I'm still pushing that we go twice a month. They go for three months without paying. And for what little they make, it's tough, the budget, for three months without any money. And I feel like that if, unless there are state law and we can prove that, that that is state law, we need to think about going back to help our staff that's getting paid that little amounts, you know, like the teachers assistants, the bus drivers, and all of that, food nutrition, and that, to twice a month.
Okay, I think I heard two concerns in there. I think I heard the one concerning this, did I hear anything on this budget? Was that the one about paying...
Yes, at the end of December. I did bring that up. Why are we switching? Are they a state documentation showing?
Uh-
Well, I made a phone call and they couldn't, nobody tell me.
Okay.
Down there. So I'd like to see paperwork that we had to switch at for our employees, but we're taking all their benefits away.
Okay. I don't have the answer to your question. Dr. Fisher, do you want to kind of throw your two cents in?
Absolutely, sir. First of all, really, that question really doesn't have anything to do with the budget.
Okay.
The budget is what the budget is. That's the recommended budget. That's more of a semantics and organization of payroll structure, so it really has nothing to do with the budget. However, that is a state law. That is something that we have to, we're supposed to pay on the last day of the month. And while, you know, we've communicated that, you know, a couple of times over the last several weeks to you guys, I do think in the long run, this is a positive because what we hear a lot of times more often is when we pay teachers at the last working day, last student day of December, then it is a long time between Christmas break and then January. It's almost six, could be almost six and a half weeks before they get paid again. This pay seven we're paying at the end of December will be more in line with how they're normally paid on the last day of the month. But it is a part of the state financial systems that you are to pay the last day of the month.
Okay, I'll agree with you 100% there. What about those that goes three months without getting the paycheck?
Well, so, you know, in terms of paying people twice a month, we discussed that in great detail at the Finance and Personnel Committee, and based on that conversation, there was really no appetite to move forward with that. You know, while it does seem good on the front end, it does create issues when we allow employees to, for example, they do payroll deductions or they have things drafted from their check, and then if you break that check in half, then that really messes that up because half the check, they may have more deductions coming out than that first half is there. The lag time between getting paid is really only at the inception of their employment. That is the big time that allows. And again, it's just like in most jobs, you work and you get paid for time that you've worked. So because of the calendar that we have and because the payroll happens, it really happens to be when you begin working, especially there at the beginning of the year. The other piece of that is, you know, teachers, classified folks are paid there in September and they're paid again. They get that check in June. So once they start working, it's not as big of a deal as the original onset of their employment.
Why about getting these calls from people that's been working with us for 15, 18 years? But who's on that finance committee?
They need, if you're getting calls, and quite honestly, Mr. Blanton, that's not something that we get a lot of calls on about, you know, paying that. We don't hear from those folks, so we, I would encourage you to have them call our office to be able that we can walk through that they're getting paid in September and then they're getting paid in June. So if we, you know, a lot of times what we hear is, I'm going to be paid in August. If you get paid in August, then you're not going to get paid. Your page will stop in May. So you still have two months there that, you know, those 10-month employees are still only going to have two months if they're not getting paid.
Who's on that committee? So I know who to talk to.
On the finance cell?
Mr. Fisher.
This is more of an operation.
All right, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Blanton, I've kind of, we've kind of got off the agenda, okay? What I would encourage you to do is either talk to Dr. Fisher or talk to this committee because I've been gracious by letting us go down this rabbit hole. It's really not on the agenda. But if you'll just check with them, and what I want to do now is I want to-
Wait a minute, about the rabbit hole. This is on the agenda.
Uh, no, it's not.
You talked about the price, the December, and I brought that up in there.
I think I said I was more entertaining a motion, I mean, a vote on the proposed beginning budget resolution.
No, we was talking about the December, that pay going from the last, the last day of school.
That was, that was in the committee report. I read the committee report. That was from the committee report.
Okay, is that not what we're supposed to be discussing in here?
We're not, we're discussing the proposed budget that we're fixing to vote on.
Okay, if you would just get with Dr. Fisher, that committee, and you could attend the committee and bring it up. Okay, what I'd like to do now is vote on the proposed beginning budget resolution. Any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor of that? All those opposed? All right, that's eight to one. All right, personnel report. I need a motion and a second on the personnel report that's being presented to you. Mr. Umphrey's made the motion, Mr. Bridges made the second, any discussion on the personnel report, which can't really discuss a lot. All right, all in favor? That's all opposed, eight to one. All right, safety and operations. Mr. Spurling.
The September 29th Safety and Operations Committee meeting was called to order by Committee Chair Walter Spurling. Daniel House shared a safety update. He has been meeting with each school administrative team to discuss their individual school risk management plan to ensure all plans are up to date. David Pless shared updates from transportation. Ridership reports were collected in September, and we are hoping for increased ridership. We are still working with DMB on training additional drivers, education, teachers. Rodney Borders shared a brief update on his work with law enforcement. He shared that schools are working proactively to avoid bigger issues. Sandy Hammerick shared that multiple schools are doing Stewart with Hello programs and emphasis on improved social interaction among students. Ms. Hammerick shared that we are looking to extend our peer and mentoring programs to additional schools. We are continuing to work with schools and our staff to ensure we have training and dealing, on dealing with grief and trauma. Dr. Fisher shared information regarding a recently developed pre-K, pre-home visit questionnaire to help with ensuring a positive, safe environment for these visits. Dr. Fisher shared that secondary administrators have been discussing a clear bag policy for athletic events. A draft policy was shared for discussion. The committee is in favor of this procedure. Mr. Philip Lane from the city of Shelby shared about a recent incident with a car on fire at Elizabeth Elementary School. He praised Chip Childers and David Pless for their quick and appropriate response in putting out the fire. Probation Officer Carmen Clark reported that they have collected school supplies to be donated to a school. Ms. Hammerick will work with them on getting this donation to a school. There were no other agency reports. Dr. Fisher shared an update on Marion School, the Marion School property. The committee heard a proposal from the nonprofit group, One More, One Less. Dr. Wampler and Chip Childers shared the Capital Project report. This report will be shared with the full board as an information item at their October meeting. Daniel Sherman shared an update on the Kings Mountain High School gym floor project. Mr. Share, excuse me, Mr. Childers gave a roofing update on Kings Mountain High. Dr. Wampler and Mr. Childers shared bids received to replace one of the Childers, Chillers at Township 3 Elementary School. They recommended accepting the lowest bid from Piatt in the amount of $196,000, which includes contingency. This project will be paid for using the public school building repair and renovation funds. The committee supported the recommendation, and it will go to the full board for approval at their October meeting. Dr. Wampler and Mr. Childers shared bids received for re-roofing, the re-roofing of Bowling Springs Elementary School. This roof had damage from a recent hailstorm and has been submitted to insurance for coverage. They recommended accepting the lowest bid from Gutter Guys in the amount of $302,000, which includes contingency. The committee supported the recommendation, and it will go to the full board for approval at their October meeting. Dr. Wampler shared a list of CTE surplus items from Rhonda Benfield for approval. These items are no longer needed or are broken. The committee supported the recommendation, and it will go to the full board for approval in October. Dr. Fisher reviewed the draft strategic plan with an updated action step. The committee was in agreement with the plan. Dr. Wampler shared the 2026 to 2027 school calendar options with the committee. The committee discussed the options. The calendar will come up for a vote and approval at the next board meeting. Dr. Fisher shared a request from TPA Principal Anita Ware and the TPA School Improvement Team to name the weight room after Jim Putnam and the multipurpose room after Adam Floyd. Both of these are past employees who have passed away. The committee supported the recommendation, and it will go to the full board for approval in October. The committee went into closed session as defined in GS 143-318 dot 11A3 to consult with the attorney. With no additional business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Safety and Operation Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 27th, 2025, at 11:45 a.m.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spurling. There are several items that come from committee with their approval. Number one is resolution of safeguarding our children from vaping and nicotine. Township number three, Chiller replacement bids, Bowling Springs roof bids, CTE surplus, and TPA room name request. Any questions on any of those items? Yes, sir?
Yes. Why do we have to give out the contingent fee that we're going to add to a bid? If they find hidden costs after they put their bid in and our maintenance people sees that, then we've got that money to go there. But if you tell, put it out there upfront, most people, they're going to drop their bid down just a little bit to try to get it and they're going to, they'll find some way of using that brand, that contingent money. Why is that a law that we have to tell that upfront? Let them put their bid in. If they're doing a roof and they don't find anything wrong except for that roof, and till they get those shingles still wrong, welling good. But if they do find it, call our maintenance people in, let them check it. Yes, that is hidden call, hidden something wrong, and then we put that bid out there. But I think we throw money away just about every time.
Dr. Fisher, do you want to talk about the contingency?
I know we've been doing it for a long time.
I can, but I mean, I think that's industry standard of putting contingency in there. If you don't have a contingency, then when you go over, it's going to be like, well, this is over now. I think you open yourself up to a lot more speculation and liability and uncertainty of what you're spending there. But the contingency fee of 10% or whatever, 15, whatever that job calls for, it's still a competitive bid process that is monitored by our project managers and our operations department. So that's pretty standard operating procedure, I think, in, you know, putting operations out to bid.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Fisher. Mr. Blanton, I guess if the board would have to change that. Well, you're on that committee, so, all right, yeah, more policy. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, please come forward, please.
I have a problem with the contingency, but just bring it out for me.
The contingency money is not part of the bid process. We add that internally after the bids come in.
So the person, when we send it out for bid, they have no clue what we're thinking the contingency is going to be?
No, take for instance, the roof bid for Bowling Springs. Gutter Guy's actual bid was $279,124. And then we add contingency to that in case we have any rotten woodwork. And then after this job is done, it's specific to what we can use it for, but that money is reusable long as it's in the same calendar year.
Okay. Did that help you?
Not upfront, no, sir.
Mr. Grigg.
That is, that is our practice. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Childers, who sets the percentage on these? I've noticed on a couple of them, it's different percentages. Is there some reason there's-
It's our history with the building and our, a lot of times, we have a Wednesday maintenance committee that meets every Wednesday. We'll throw that around the table. If one of my supervisors knows that building better than I do, take for instance, the Chiller bid. That's not my expect, you know, that's not my-
Expertise.
Specialty, yes. But I do have two people sitting there that do do that. So, you know, they make that recommendation. A lot of times, it'll be Dr. Wampler and myself that'll actually do the percentages. But we take all the information into account.
I'd like to point out, too, that these estimates come to the committee for approval, and we also approve in committee, the committee approves the contingency of percentages, and then it comes to the board. So the place to dispute how much the contingencies are or even if we put them on, would be the committee. Not tonight, tonight's board should be approving the plan, and if it isn't approved, it would go back to committee.
But we do not put that in as part of their actual bid.
I think that was Mr. Blanton's question. The bedders are not aware of it prior, okay? Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If that's the case, why does it not come before the full board instead of only the committee?
It does. We're voting on the contingency tonight.
But he said it went before the committee, and if the committee didn't like it,
First.
Then it didn't go to the board.
Right, goes to committee first. If they approve it, it goes on to the board. That's what we're voting on tonight.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to know.
We're not bypassing the full vote.
I know, that's the reason I'm asking the question. Have another question, Mr. Chairman. On the CTE surplus, it says, I believe that you read that it's either broken or not needed for use anymore. Does that mean that the surplus material could be in good shape, but that particular department does not need it?
I, go ahead. I read these items are no longer needed or are broken.
Right.
So, yes, they could be serviceable and outdated. And so the schools determined they were no longer needed because they've been replaced or, you know, you had 10 and now you've only got one left because the rest of them broke or something to that effect, and so they come to us then to be recommended for surplus.
Not concerned about that.
Okay.
I understand. I understand that. What I'm questioning is if these materials or equipment is in good shape or is okay to be used other places, is it recommended or is it transferred to another school, to another area?
So Rhonda Benfield and her team does a really good job replay or sending equipment to other schools if it's needed in other schools.
Good.
These are items that are not needed countywide.
I did want us to get rid of stuff that's good and have a need for it in another school or something. That's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledford. All right. Now, with that being said and all the quick, thank y'all, I'm going to take a vote on all these items. All in favor? That's nine to zero. All right. Education Programs and Policy, Mr.? Oh, Ms. Sherman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sherman.
Oh, it's fine. Okay. The September 30th Educational Programs and Policy Committee meeting was called to order at James Love Elementary School by Committee Chairman Ron Umpfries. Dr. Jason Parker and Dr. Brian Hunnell shared information related to the Reading Horizons program. Sarah Stitt, our partnership consultant from Reading Horizons, shared an overview of the program and the connection to the science of reading research. The committee then participated in a classroom visit to see the Reading Horizons program in action. Dr. Stephen Fisher reminded the committee that eight policies with legal updates based on recent legislation are up for approval at their October meeting. Those policies are 3210 parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials, 3320 school trips, 4130 out-of-district admission, 5024, 6127, 7266 emergency epinephrine auto-injector devices, 6125 administering medicines to students, 5070, 7350 public records, retention, release, and disposition, 7820 personnel files, and 7100 recruitment and selection of personnel. Dr. Fisher and Leah Sink shared information related to HB 959. Mrs. Sink suggested some additional language to be added to policy 3225, 4312, and 7320 technology responsible use to clarify responsibilities related to public library materials. The committee agreed with this addition and this policy update will go to the full board for a first read in October. Rhonda B. and Phil shared two sole source requests for approval. Paxton Patterson is the sole source vendor for the Career Discovery Construction Lab learning systems that are requested for board approval for use at Shelby Middle School. One request is in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents and will be funded using monies provided by Bean Construction. The second request is in the amount of eleven thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents and will be funded using federal funds for CTE. The committee supported those, these requests, which will go to the full board for approval in October. Dr. Huns shared the Head Start documents for approval. The committee recommends approval of these documents, which will go to the full board for approval in October. Dr. Hunnell shared a field trip request from Crest High School for an optional overseas field trip to Amsterdam and Paris in the spring of 2027. The committee supported the trip and it will come to the board for approval at their October meeting. Dr. Hunnell shared the school improvement plans. The committee discussed the plans and process. The committee supported the plans and they will go to the full board for approval at the October meeting. Dr. Fisher reviewed the draft strategic plan with one tweak to the educational and policy goals based on feedback from the committee at their last meeting. The committee further discussed the goals and action steps. Dr. Fisher also shared three options for the 2026-2027 school calendar along with feedback from teachers and the community. The committee discussed the options. Selection of the 2026-2027 calendar will come to the board for approval at their October meeting. With no additional new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Educational and Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, at 11:30 a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Next on the agenda is policy for first read. That'd be policy 3225, 4312, 7320 technology responsible use, no action needed tonight. Mr. Ledford, which policies were you mentioning at the open? It was 7820 and which other one?
Seventy-one hundred.
Seventy-one hundred.
Redmond selection of personnel.
Okay, and personnel files. I will move that to a third read at our next meeting.
That might be a simple answer.
He said he had 21 questions, so I don't think, is it a simple? One question?
Well, it could be and then it could not be, so.
All right. Well, we'll just, we'll move it.
Let me just throw this in.
I think Mrs. Sane and I need to review these.
Okay, but let me make sure you understand.
Yeah.
This is the ones that came from the State School Board Association because of changes in state law. We didn't have, these are not optional for us. We had, we have to change these to meet.
That's okay. I'm not concerned about that, but I'm concerned about some of the wording and some of the things, like for example, in, in the first paragraph there, it talks about, let's see the beginning of the sentence. It is the policy of the board to provide all applicants for employment with equal employment opportunities and to provide current employees with training compensation, promotion, and other benefits of employment without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, military affiliation, genetic information, sex, age, or disability, except when sex, age, or physical requirements are essential occupational qualifications.
Okay.
Chairman, point of order.
What positions? My question.
Hold on, hold on. I got a point of order. Yes, sir. The, that first paragraph is not in the scope of what we're voting on. That is not part of the changes. That is part of the old.
Yeah.
This is what we're going to do. We're going to move those for a third read. End of discussion. You get your answers, they'll be brought up next meeting. Now, we are going to vote on.
Point of question for.
Yeah.
So these changes were made so that we would comply with law. Third won't work because we're talking about wholesale changes and so it would have to go through another entire cycle if we make changes other than the ones that's already made.
If changes are made.
Right. So would it not be prudent to vote on this particular change that has already gone through that's been laying here for 60 days? And then have Mr. Ledford come to the committee meeting and question if there's additional changes the committee feels like being made? So it's a two-step process instead of lumping it all into one thing.
The board can take either. Legally, the board could take either path. I have no concerns with moving those two to a third read. Be more than happy to go through any questions you have. If changes are needed, we would need additional readings. However, if the board chooses to vote as is and then bring those policies to the next policy committee meeting, add additional changes, we would run through a first read, then be set for approval, so it'd be another 60 days. My suspicion is that we'll be able to work through those questions and that additional changes will likely not be necessary, so a third read does not give me concern, but the board legally could take either path.
Mr. Humphrey, the reason I'm questioning some of these things is to keep us out of trouble with either EEOC, OSHA, or whatever. And it's my responsibility as a trained human resource professional to understand, to know what is taking place.
Wait, Mr. Bridges had a question for the attorney.
So these have come from the state. This is from, this is law, though. So what is, I mean, I don't understand, if the state is telling us to do this, what the question would be on, why we should not approve this tonight?
All right. As the attorney said, she thinks that once she meets with Mr. Ledford, all of this will go by the wayside. I don't want to sit up here and argue back and forth about what's state law, what's not state law, what's this, what's that. If the attorney and Mr. Ledford can get together, he's satisfied, we're going to move this to a third read, next board meeting, we'll take it up. That's my decision, I'm sticking with it.
That's my original question.
All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I don't mean to be so cruel, but, you know, we're, let's just try to make it simple and get his answers to his questions. With that being said, I will vote, we will be voting on.
I didn't hear Ms. Sherman, when she told that those dollar amounts on that, one thing she read on her, would you mind repeating that, please?
He should have a copy of it.
I don't have it in front of me. Ms. Sherman, which?
Well, there are several different things that had dollar amounts.
Do you remember what was concerned?
Beans and, beans and.
The money they donated.
Let's see.
So.
Yeah.
Thirty-eight thousand, eleven thousand.
Okay. One request in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents will be funded using monies provided by Bean Construction.
Thirty-nine thousand.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, five-sixty-seven.
And the other one?
Well.
Eleven thousand, eight-twenty-two, twenty-six. As federal funds.
You good? All right. Policy 3320, policy 4130, policy 5024, 6127, 7266, policy 5070, 7350, and policy 6125 has come to us before committee. Any question on those? All those in favor? It's nine to zero. All right. Next is, also comes from committee, the Shelby Middle School Construction Labs One and Two Head Start Items and Crest High School Amsterdam and Paris trip and school improvement plans for the elementary schools and the middle and high schools. Those from committee, any questions on that? With none, all in favor? That passes nine to zero.
Couple of superintendent updates for you tonight. I know it's maybe hard for you to believe, definitely hard for me to believe, that we finished the first nine weeks of school already. That ended on Friday, teacher work day today. Tuesday will begin the second nine week for our students, so just excited about that second quarter coming. Tomorrow night, you've gotten invitations, you've had that emailed to you several times, you may have an invitation at your spot. Would you have a circle of honor recognition tomorrow night for employees who have had certain lengths of service? We're excited about recognizing that and celebrating with those folks tomorrow night at Little Grand at 6:30. We do have, just as a reminder, we do have a special education, excuse me, a special call board meeting next Tuesday on the 21st regarding continuing discussion on Marion. There is information posted online already on that for that meeting as well. You've got some committee meetings there, you can continue to go, gets us into November there with the November board meeting, Veterans Day. Draw your attention to the Heroes in Agape banquet, which is Tuesday, November 18th at Little Grand, Thanksgiving holidays, and then it's Christmas. So it's hard to believe that we're here in the middle of October. Football season's going to be finishing up. We've got, I think, three regular season weekends and playoffs to start for fall sports and so we're at that time to fill in the air some nice things in the fall. So exciting, good first nine weeks of school, looking forward to good things as we move into the second nine weeks. Not included in your superintendent update, but some additional things I'd like to mention is, as you know, we have a new student information system. Power School is gone. Incorrectly, sometimes still refer to it as Power School, but it is Infinite Campus now, or a lot of times you'll just see that as NCCS, which is a North Carolina student information system. And one of the things that we've tried to do and schools have tried to do is really push out parental access at the NCCS, making sure that parents create their login information, parents have access to progress sports, all student grades, student attendance, all that stuff in the student information system. And so far, in that first nine weeks, we're up to a little over 55% of our parents who have logged in and created that account, which is pretty good for this time of year. We want to continue to push that, you know, well into the 80s and 90s in terms of parents participating, so we'll continue to work on that. And parents need to make sure that they have, are creating that account in NCCS to make sure they can help keep up with our students' information. If parents have questions about that, they need to contact their child's school and they can help them get situated in NCCS. And then third, October is National Principals Appreciation Month and we just are so appreciative of our wonderful, school-based administrators. They do a wonderful job every day of leading in their buildings, captaining those ships, just tremendous people that are responsible for a lot in leading schools and doing a lot of things in our school buildings, just a really appreciation for those administrators. So the next item is our 2026 to 2030 strategic plan. This has been something we've worked on with board members and committees for several months. You've got a final draft of that strategic plan. We took the board's committee structure and looked at that and we have a policy in the educational programs section of that strategic plan. We have a safety and operations section and then we have a finance and personnel section. So we believe that three, these three pillars, which make up the board's organization, also help us define from a strategic plan where we're going. Under policy and educational programs, we have three goals. Goal one is to increase academic growth and proficiency across all grade levels and underneath that goal, you can see five action steps that are real, that are very measurable, they're very specific, that are targeted and the things that we believe are important for our district. Goal two is to provide innovative, engaging educational opportunities and increase student success and community impact. Again, under that goal, you have three action steps, again, very specific, very measurable, trying to articulate the direction we want to go. And then goal three is to reduce chronic absenteeism to improve student outcomes and there are three action steps inside of each of those. As you can see, the goal under each pillar is more broad, you know, it's not as measurable, but when we get to those action steps, it is very measurable, very specific of the target, the actions that we want to see. Under safety and operations, we have two goals. Goal one, foster safe and positive inclusive environments. There are four action steps there. And then goal two is to maintain and modernize facilities to support high-quality teaching and future growth and there are three action steps in, under that goal. And then finally, under the pillar of finance and personnel, we have two goals, to recruit, retain, and recognize high-quality educators and staff. There are five action steps in that. And then in goal two, it's ensure efficient and effective use of district resources and there are three action steps. We want to, we want to be very, you know, specific with our goals. Again, I think that if you have more than two to three goals inside of a family or entitled organization, when you get that spread out too thin, you don't accomplish any of those things. There is this, you know, duplication a lot of times of sometimes folks will want to have 10 or 12 goals and then you don't accomplish any of those because you're spread too thin. So in each of those pillars, we have two or three goals that we feel good about and we appreciate the board's work and each committee meeting really focusing in on those conversations. So this is for information tonight. This is kind of the public unveiling of that work that's being done. We, you know, encourage any communication, any feedback. Uh, we, and, you know, encourage, uh, any communication, any feedback, uh, any conversations about that. It is our plan to bring this strategic plan back to the board, uh, in November for approval as we look to make the next steps of twenty-six through, uh, twenty-thirty. The current strategic plan, which is done in twenty-twenty, uh, excuse me, twenty-twenty-one, it ran through twenty-twenty-five, is expiring at the end of this year. This gives a roadmap to success for the future. So, Mr. Chairman, be glad, be glad to try to answer any questions that the board members have about superintendent updates or strategic plan. If not, we, uh, just provide that for your information tonight.
Okay, any questions?
I have one question.
Mr. Spurley.
So, uh, you said about fifty-five percent on the new, uh, parent portal, for lack of, uh, uh, being able, not being able to say what it is?
Infinite Campus, yes, sir.
Okay, so how's that compared to the, to the amount of parents that were using, uh, the Power School before you switched?
Ginger, do you have a, it's, uh, I, I think we've done a better job, Mr. Spurley, of being intentional with that. And sometimes that with a new product, we've really tried to push hard to make sure that, that, that this new product is, parents are logging into that, keeping up with that. When Power School came on, um, you know, years ago, that, that wasn't a push, it wasn't something a lot of things did. So a lot of places really pushed, so, you know, over time, that just, it was hard to really have a blitz on that. So our schools have really done a good job through parent-teacher conferences. We'll continue to do that in the spring, making sure that we get parents logged in to, to the infinite campus push. I, I will brag on technology, uh, and I'll brag on our entire staff, not just technology. I think Ginger will be the first one. We, we have had great infinite campus leadership with that, but our schools have done a wonderful job of, of championing this. There are districts that are near to us that hadn't even opened the parent portal yet, uh, just because of some of the issues they've had with transition. And, um, you know, like any major transition with that, there's been a couple bumps in the roads, but our, our team has done a phenomenal job of, of navigating that and, uh, getting us in a good spot with, with student information.
Chairman, I'd just like to say, the reason why I ask that is that's parents' first step to being involved within the school. So, good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, well, are we gonna move on down to the student transfers? I'll need to ask this question to Dr. Fisher, Ali's there.
Yeah, I mean, uh, are you, are you gonna speak on student transfers?
I had planned on it.
Okay.
I can answer a gen, general question about transfers.
You got a general question for us?
Those, those transfers are just for information. They're not for approval.
And you, you'll have to probably look this information up if you're not gonna have it. How many, uh, grade levels at each school are we at capacity? At each school, I'd like to have those numbers at our, our next meeting, uh, or whenever we're gonna be doing. Because I'm, I was looking at these transfers here and stuff, and, uh, I noticed there were one here at capacity. So I've just come up with, just at each school, how many grade levels is at each school are at capacity?
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you, Dr. Fisher.
Thank you.
All right, next is our public participation. Mr. Bridges, do you read our rules, please?
Yes, sir. Public comments should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matters. Specific concerns related to confidential student or personnel matters should be directed to the superintendent or designee. Comments must be relevant to the matters that are within the authority of the board. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks or threats directed towards staff, elected board members, or members of the public. Speakers shall be courteous in their language and presentation. Insults, profanity, use of langu, use of vulgar language, or gestures, or other inappropriate behaviors are not allowed. The board vests in its chair or other presiding officers to terminate the remarks of any individual when he or she does not adhere to these rules established above. Any person who willfully interrupts or disturbs a board meeting may be directed to leave the meeting by the presiding officer. Any persons who refuses to leave may be prosecuted for disrupting a public meeting. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that members of the Cleveland County Board of Education are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters, official matters. Immediate answers are not generally possible and must be deferred pending investigation and consideration by the full board.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Uh, I think it's Jonathan Bierman?
Sorry, I'm tired.
That's, that's.
Hello, my name is Kim Bierman, and this is my husband, John.
Maybe, yeah.
Is that better?
That's a lot better, thank you.
My name is Kim Bierman, and this is my husband, John, and we are coming to the board to promote some amazing things that our seniors could do at the high schools. I think that it would be really neat for the seniors to be able to paint their parking spots, to show pride in their school, as well as showing their individuality. And, because there's a lot of kids out there that are very artistic. And I think that would just be a great thing to incorporate into our school system here in Cleveland County. And then the other thing that I want to propose is potentially bringing, like, a homecoming dance, where we announce homecoming king and queen at the dance instead of at, like, the football game. Instead of having a parade, do a dance for the kids. And I think that would create more memories for these high schoolers to take with them as they grow and. That's really all the words that I can come up with. Do you want to add anything to it?
Just, uh, different type of events that they can have open to them to help create more memories. Because currently, um, as parents of a Burns, Burns High School child, we can see that there's not a whole lot of events for seniors to participate in, besides, um, obviously, the Senior Prank Day, which doesn't ever seem to go over well for most schools, um, across the board. But some other, just year-long activities that they can kind of keep their memories, especially like she was saying about the parking spot painting. They could pay a fee. Um, we know that East Gaston and some Gaston schools do participate in it. That they could pay a fee to the school, paint their spot, and at the end of the year, they'd have to wash it off or do something to remove the paint and return it back to its standard appearance. So.
Thank y'all. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is board member comments. We'll start with this side and come across. Mr. Spurley? Oh, did you? Okay, Mr. Spurley.
I'd just like to congratulate North Shelby, first of all, for the twenty-twenty, again, for the twenty-twenty-five State and National School of Character. Uh, great accomplishment. Uh, the Stand Up for Kindness, what a great program that is. And, uh, and I'd like to thank our life-saving team, I'd say, for, like better words, but, uh, what a great job they did. I do want to point out, you know, out of, out of all the bad things you might hear go on, uh, you know, it's like, it's like bad things overpower good things. For, uh, in the military, we used to say, for every hundred good things you did, the one bad thing will, will erase them all. And, and that tends to be the same way in life. So, uh, I, I want to keep, you know, uh, it really, I just want to bring to the forefront every chance I get. Cleveland County Schools does good things, and we have good students, we have good teachers, we have good administrators. We're, we're, uh, ranking right at the top, one of the best places to work at. We have, uh, uh, what was it? Uh, seven schools that, that went up a grade in, in, in the grading system on our schools. So, I mean, we have some great things going on, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Spurley.
Thank everybody for what they do. Just to let everybody know, I received another anonymous letter. Why don't you sign it? Why don't we have a talk? Cause I'm gonna keep working for every last staff and every last child in this district as long as I'm here. And the dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Blatton. You have anything, Mr.?
Yes, real briefly. Um, it was great to have the opportunity to visit the third-grade classroom during our committee meeting. James loved to see reading, Horizons, and, and Process. It, it's an amazing program. Uh, there's, there's no wonder why our grades are coming up. It, it's, it's just brill, brilliantly constructed. Uh, also, like to thank Beam Construction. Uh, that's a rather large chunk of money that they provided to, for those, uh, construction kits for our CTE students, and we talked about them briefly. They're getting a cement mixer, hey. How awesome is that? So it, it, it's a great opportunity for those students to be exposed to construction, so. Very, very.
Thank you. Mr. Ledford?
First of all, congratulations to the United States and Israel for bringing back all their hostages they had, uh, overseas today. Uh, I think that's a very great accomplishment, uh, not only for Israel, but for the United States as well. Second, I want to congratulate Kaiser School for their hundredth year celebration. A tremendous crowd there, and, uh, I think the people enjoyed themselves. They had a section where, uh, they could go in the library and look at, uh, old annuals and old paperwork and see things that had happened. So congratulations to them. Third, uh, congratulate all the ones that were here today. Yes, saving a life is a very, very important thing. I hope you might consider that to go before the American Red Cross for a life-saving award. They deserve it, and, uh, they do that. I guess the nearest one to us here is Gaston County. I don't know. But, uh, it, it would be great to have them recognized by the American Red Cross as well. Other than that, I mean, I think we're doing well. I think we're doing some excellent things in the school. I think that we're accomplishing a lot, and, uh, all I can say is just keep up the work and continue forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ledford. Ms. Sherman?
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Fisher for engaging the board and, um, giving us an opportunity to add to the goals on the strategic plan. I think it was back in the summer when we had our retreat the first time that you asked for us to give some feedback to you, and I really appreciate that. It's not as easy as it sounds when you start trying to narrow it down and make things that are, goals that are effective and measurable and, but we have a great strategic plan, and, um, I'm looking forward to seeing us work to meet those goals. I also wanted to commend the principals, teachers on their school improvement plans. Um, school improvement plans take hours and hours and hours and lots of meetings to get those together and narrow those down as well into goals that are meaningful and measurable. So, um, I know that a lot of hard work goes into creating those plans. And then the last thing, it was great to see all our students and parents tonight, and I look forward to seeing more of them in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Mr. Bridge, you have anything?
I always enjoy going to North Shelby, and, and it was like it was said tonight, you know, if you're having a bad day, you might want to stop in over there, and you're gonna find out you're probably not having a really bad day. These, these people that work over there are some of the best teachers for our system. They really have to deal with a lot at that school, and I enjoy going over there every chance I get. And make sure you put me down for any kind of, um, event that they're gonna have. I try to make sure that I make it to all of them, and, um, you know, we've got a lot of good people in our school system, and I appreciate each and every one of you. The, um, life-saving, um, thing, I was kind of shocked tonight because my great niece was actually one of them. Cameron Clark, uh, from Bethwaire, and, you know, I didn't know that until she walked in here and, and. But I think that's a great thing, and I think these people need to be recognized for stuff like this. The other thing I, I want to bring up is, and, and talk about a minute is policies. You know, we, we've talked about a lot of policies tonight, and we've talked about tweaking them and state policies and, and all the different things that we have to do. But are we actually following all the policies when, when an event happens? And I have concerns that there are some policies that we don't follow. I want to find out more about the, uh, Student Code of Conduct because if we're gonna have a code of conduct, it needs to be followed in all schools. Not just in one, but in every school. So, um, again, thank you guys for coming tonight, and congratulations again to North Shelby, and thanks to all the teachers and staff that we have here at Cleveland County School Systems.
Mr. Bridges?
I'll just be brief. I just want to say thank you to our admin team, uh, finance team, uh, all of our administrators. Uh, thank you to our teachers for what they do, our bus drivers, cafeteria workers, bus custodians, everyone that plays an intricate part in making Cleveland County schools efficient and operating. Uh, I appreciate what you do every day. We couldn't do it without you, uh, and I hope everybody has a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to General Statute one forty-three, dash, three-one-eight-eleven, subsection A.
Mike, sorry. Subsection A, uh, motion to go into closed session to consult our attorney, uh, over a confidential matter, personnel matter.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bridges. I'll have a second. Uh, see Mr. Spurley's hand first. All those in favor? It's nine, zero. All right. Thank y'all for coming.